All right, so let's call this meeting of the ordinance committee to order. And I believe we are in February 23rd, 23rd, 2021. It is 6:02. I see that all of us are present, which is great. We are holding this meeting remotely in accordance with Governor Charlie Baker's memo on open meeting law. And let's take a look at what we have. Publics, oh, no, we have, we have minutes. So let's, let's head over to the minutes. And I believe they were from January 20.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So Tom, did you have a chance to look at those?
I didn't.
Okay, perfect. I'm happy to take, I looked at them as well. I'm happy to take a motion.
A motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes of January 26th. And is that 26th?
I believe so, right? I'm, here, I can tell you, hold on. I'm almost 100% positive since I just sent them out earlier.
Yeah. I just, I just read them, but I don't, I don't want to like switch back because I have my screen on the screen I want it to be.
Yeah, let me just confirm. I want to say. Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Owen's there.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, motion passes. And we had somebody that came in. I thought maybe someone for public speak time, but if any of the other counselors would like to say anything before we move on to our agenda, I'm happy to entertain that at this time. Okay, Omar, you want to say anything?
Thanks.
Okay. So we do have, so we have a couple of older things to wrap up and we have some new business. So I know that Owen, you had sent out the, the language, the updated language for Indigenous Peoples' Day and looked like updated language for cannabis delivery. You want to just tell us what you did there?
Uh, yeah, so just Indigenous Peoples' Day. I kind of just tidied up the, I tidied up the, the actual ordinance part, the defining of holidays, certain holidays that I think weren't obvious. You know, obviously everyone knows, I think, when New Year's Day and New Year's Eve and Christmas is, but some of the ones that occur on specific either dates or, or days like third month, like Patriots' Day is a third Monday in April and Indigenous Peoples' Day is the second Monday in October, Veterans' Day, et cetera. I just, I just left those as indicated. And I made the, the, the changes we discussed last time to the resolution, which were pretty minimal. I added that little piece of language to add. It's, it's in the, it's in the, it's the first, it's the first be it further resolved and at the end, I added, and to reflect on the meanings, honor and celebrate the names and languages that are utilized for the places in our city and community. We had kind of talked about that.
Yep.
And then I just flipped at the, at the end, when it talks about who to communicate with, I, I put the tribes first as suggested by Brittany, who was here last time.
Yep.
Just to make sure we're, we're placing the appropriate focus and honor. That's really it. And I just wanted to show it to you all because I want to send it for the packet along with all the communications and, and in favor. I haven't received any communication against, so.
Right. The only, the only thing that I saw was someone asked for a letter to be read about how the, some of the settlers in East Hampton bought land from the, the native people here. And so I don't know if you saw that. Did you guys see that?
Uh, when was that?
Uh, it was maybe two weeks ago. It was from Dawn, Dawn, oh, I got it. He, he came out a lot when we were looking at the one way. Omar, do you remember his name? Is this just escaping me right now? He, he was the guy, he lives on the street where we were looking at a one way from Dunkin' Donuts to Center Pep. And he's your neighbor, I think. But his, his name is escaping me right now. He asked for a letter to be read.
All right, can you, uh, do you want to send, send me that all? Because I wanted to include as much, everything for the packet.
Yeah, I think that would be ideal. If, so if you didn't get, I'll definitely forward that over to you.
Okay.
Sure. And, and we already made the recommendation on that. So, you know, that's, this is just like, just dotting the i's, crossing the t's.
Exactly. I just wanted you all to see with the final language because I want to, instead of having people have to dig through, I want to make sure it's in the packet.
Sure. Yeah. That makes sense. Absolutely. And so how about, uh, do you want to move on to delivery here?
Yes, so a couple of things. So just, so just first of all, one little thing I kind of did, even though it wasn't specifically about delivery, is that, like I told you, I, I made a little edit on our social consumption definition, even though we don't have social consumption yet, now that it's a thing. I had altered that slightly and then I got feedback now that we, that there is language for it to, uh, to, uh, to just include the, the state definition.
Okay.
Uh, if that's okay.
I think that's fine.
Just kind of, you know, laying the crepe for if that ever, I know that's in pilot, pilot program now. We're not part of the pilot communities. I just figured I'd put that in there. And then, um, let's see, I will scroll down and to ask you to where to scroll down. I, so in consultation with Shaleen Title, who was very kind to offer her time. In terms of the marijuana courier and the marijuana delivery operator, I just included the entirety of the state language there, just so it was clear.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess, you know, any way to try, any way of like rewording that and then referencing to the state language kind of got, might have presented language that wasn't completely congruent with the state language. So she and I went back and forth and I just included the actual state language. I thought that made the most sense, if you're okay with that.
I think that's fine, yeah.
Okay, and then, uh.
Let me know where to scroll.
Yep, if you scroll, excuse me. So 10.10.4.4. Nothing really changes there, except that, um, nothing changes there. That's what we had before.
That's what we had before.
And then just below that, I add that clarifying sentence just to make it very clear that, you know, she didn't think necessarily we had to include that, but I just wanted to like make it like distinguish that there are certain types of businesses that need to use vehicles. And so it doesn't mean that there's ever going to be like a cannabis food truck, but I just want anyone to look at our rules and say, oh, that this conflicts with this, this section.
Right.
And then if you scroll down to 10.10.7.4.2.
Right here.
Oh, wait a second. Yeah, I think that's where it is. There's something I feel like I'm missing here. Hold on, I just want to. Oh, no, this is actually, no, this is where I, so this was the whole discussion about these applicants only require pre-certification and not a provisional license as per kind of the state program in terms of an equity, even further equity provisions to make room for, for these applicants. So I just included that clause as we discussed. And then the hybrid, the hybrid vehicles, we agreed to keep that in, but just raise the number to six. And then there was the, uh, the provision about if you're going to be in a downtown business location, you need to have your own parking spaces.
Yep. And that seems like that's in line with all the things that we talked about.
And then if you go all the way to the end, there's just the, the table of use. And I just can't, I can't remember, did we basically agree that we were okay with in neighborhood business, the courier operating? Because it's basically just like, I couldn't remember what the final thing was.
I mean, I think it's just, it's just someone who's going back and forth to the dispensaries, so.
Right, as opposed to someone who's storing cannabis products. And we agree that that would be an issue.
Yep. Looks like Dan has a question. Go ahead, Dan.
I think you just answered it. The delivery operator is, the delivery courier or person is delivering product from a retailer to the home and not having his own supply in his own establishment, correct?
Right, so that would be the courier. The courier would not have their own supply. The delivery, the delivery operator would operate out of a warehouse where they would have their own supply and they would deliver that.
Do we have that?
We are, we don't have that yet.
So these three licenses would only be for delivery couriers?
Delivery operators.
Operators.
Yeah, so like, say you wanted to buy a warehouse and you had, you know, and, and this, you know, obviously it all goes through the state, but if you wanted to buy a warehouse and have a, um, a selection of, of products in your warehouse that you then would deliver to people, that would be the delivery operator.
Okay, but right now.
Would just be someone who goes to INSA, picks something up and brings it to somebody.
But right now we don't have operators or we're, we're establishing them with this change?
Yep, we're, so the, the state has, has just finalized their language with this. And, and so in all the applicants, you know, it's kind of interesting. The applicants are, for the first three years are equity only applicants.
I like that. But I don't, but I misunderstand. We're only having three licenses, correct?
For delivery operators.
For delivery operators. What about couriers?
They don't need a license. They just need, they just need to be certified through the state.
Well, they don't need a special permit.
A special permit.
No, they need a special permit, but we're not limiting it. Right?
Right.
So there could be 100 couriers, but they go from INSA or Liberty to the home?
Right. We also just don't think there will be 100.
Well, I'm not, I'm, I'm, that was an exaggeration. I'm just saying there's a difference between a courier is, is just someone who's, could that person be hired by INSA to make the deliveries? Are they, is INSA allowed to have their own courier?
I think for medical, I think they are. I think they're allowed.
By state law.
Yes. By state law, they're allowed to have delivery for medical, but they're not allowed to have delivery for retail until they either work with a licensed courier or, yeah, that, that's the only way. Because a delivery operator would be separate.
So if I want to be a courier, I have to get a license from the state, apply to the state, get the license, and then I can, somebody calls me up and says I'd like some cannabis. They go to INSA, buys it and brings it to the person.
Yep. And it, it would all be through an auto, like a, probably a automated app or, or website.
Uber type app.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks a lot. Thanks for the clarification.
No problem, no problem. Looks like severability, is that spelled right? No, it's just weird.
I mean, that was just what was.
No, it is, it is. So it's just my spell check is doing it for some reason. Yeah, so I, I mean, I, I like the way that this looks. So, you know, I think our next step would be to, you know, send it to the planning board. So go ahead, Owen.
Yeah, the only thing I think that I left out is I think if, if someone were to, if someone were to basically like, I'm just trying to think how this would work. If someone owned a business that was basically like a courier only business, I think the, um, the vehicle requirement should apply to them too. So I probably just have to slightly alter the hybrid clause just to say delivery operators and couriers.
Okay.
If you agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's fine. I, yeah, I think that's fine. I think that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, great. So, um, yeah, Dan.
Are they taxed, either of these?
Yeah, go ahead, Owen.
So.
Awfully, I mean.
Yeah, I know for a fact that the delivery operators do sign a host agreement. And because, because they are basically, they are housing and selling product. I don't know how the couriers work in terms of host agreements because they're not actually selling anything. So I don't know how, I don't know if they would execute host agreements because of the nature of how they operate. Just because they don't have product per se.
There's nothing in the state law that you see that allows for local taxation of a courier.
I don't.
Well, it would, that would be double taxation because the courier would be paying the tax at the point of sale.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. And then, so the delivery operator would be, you know, subject to the same local and, and state taxes.
Because he's independent of any other retailers.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I know that there, there's already been the discussion about the host community agreement for someone who's interested, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so delivery operator, I mean, it's basically a dispensary that doesn't have a, a, a front door. You know? So that, I mean, that's a good way to look at it. That's great. So I'm, you know, I feel if you make that one change, Owen, about the, the hybrid vehicles for a courier, I'm, I think this is ready to, to, we can kick it to planning board and do our joint public hearing. How do you guys feel about that? All right.
I think it's ready.
All right, so let's, uh, let's make a motion.
Motion to send the adult use cannabis amendment regarding delivery licenses, delivery operators and couriers to the planning board for joint public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Perfect, all right. So we have a motion and a second to send this back to the ordinance committee and the planning board for a joint public hearing. And Tom Peak.
Hi.
Owen's there.
Yes.
I vote yes as well, so motion passes. I will take care of that in our first meeting in March. Awesome, thanks guys, that's a good one. Let me just stop this share real quick. All right, so here we are, moving right through our agenda. And the next thing we have, which I think is, is worth introducing now, is our new business, Counselor Peak. Do you want to take this by the reins and then we can move forward with it?
Yeah, so I have two items here that got submitted. And both of these were developed in consultation with Jeff Bag and with the Barrett Consulting Group. So this isn't exclusively my language, although I had some hand in it. There's a couple of parts where I submitted these things, but would actually sort of like to talk about certain things, but I felt that given all the professionals involved, we should submit them as is and then, and then sort of discuss it. So one of the items is basically here to really loosen our regulations around accessory dwelling units, which right now can be extremely onerous and, and make it very difficult for people to develop a lot of types of housing that I think if we all sit back, we kind of realize are actually pretty like, uh, pretty nice. Like these are, these are things that we actually would like, they're desirable in a community like ours, which certainly has a housing shortage, but at the same time has a, also a shortage of like open and green space. And so if you want to build new housing units without demolishing a bunch of green space, you kind of got to figure out how to make it easy and desirable for people to add units onto existing, like, you know, already developed properties. We're calling like infill development. So that's one of them. And if it's okay with you, Counselor Derby, that's sort of the one that I want to focus on tonight. If we, we're going to.
Sure.
On one.
I don't have a problem with that.
Better prepared to talk about it than, than the other one, which is, but I'll, I'll just briefly talk about it. The other one basically makes it so that if you have a new multifamily development and you agree to put a certain amount of affordable housing on there and the, the percent varies depending on what you mean by affordable, whether that's 80% of area median income or 50%, but that if some of those units are there, then you can go to a, to a more streamlined permitting process that doesn't necessarily have to include a, like a, a special permit. And also you can deal with a, a, a more permissive parking requirement. And, and I'll just touch on this briefly. The parking requirement was something that Janet Tetra at the, you know, Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership was really, she felt very strongly about this because our current parking requirements, if I'm not mistaken, for multifamily, they require like a parking space for every bedroom, I want to say. So imagine this, you're a single parent with three kids. You want to find an apartment that'll work for them. Well, that apartment currently has to be built in a way that would allow for four cars. You don't, you don't need four cars. And so that basically, it makes it expensive to develop this, again, this, this whole idea of like, we shouldn't be making it hard for us, for people to develop the sort of housing options that we actually want to see in the city. So that's like a really high, high level, but, um, yeah, if it's okay, I'd like to take a look at, um, you ordinance.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, and I made you co-host, so you can share if you want to.
Sweet, I'll do that. I have a PDF of this right now and I need to make sure that the PDF, because this is like, basically just as a summary, like I went back and forth with Jeff on this for a while and then he sent it to Sheila Barrett to take a look at. And then what we got back was a PDF. So there might be some small word changes from the Word doc I have. So I'm going to use the PDF and I, I can just mark it, but that's just, I'll, I'll do that. And then the next time we look at this, I'll have like an editable Word doc with this language on it.
Perfect.
All right. Okay. So this is, uh, it's not super long. It's what, four pages? So I figure we can just go through it. But it's, some of this language is the same as, as before, but there was enough substantial changes that Jeff thought it made sense to just strike our current 8.5 in its entirety and replace it with this language, even though there are some similarities.
Okay.
So, um, let's see. The 8.51 is just sort of the purpose of this, you know, add inexpensive rental units, make housing available and attainable to low and moderate income households, address housing needs of East Hampton residents, permit the owner of a detached or two-family dwelling to construct one additional unit on their lot, protect stability property values and legalize conversion to encourage compliance with state building code. I think that that's an important one because I think a lot of this stuff currently does happen, but it just happens under the radar.
I agree with that.
So if we just make it legal, because it's something we'd like to see anyway, then hopefully that'll lead to more people, you know, actually doing this by the books. Okay, so building commissioner shall administer and enforce the provisions. So basically the idea here with that is that if there is, when somebody goes to do one of these things, they bring it up, the building commissioner is going to be the one who decides whether or not this needs a special permit. If it fits within the design sort of criteria that we're looking at here, then it doesn't need a special permit. But if they're looking to do something that falls outside of this, then it's not that that is necessarily banned, but they're going to have to go and get a special permit to do it. So then, yeah, it seems about sort of the application. You know, where the special permit is required. It should be submitted basically to the Board, zoning board of appeals. And the planning department may prepare, administer and modify as necessary an accessory dwelling unit guidance document, which I, I don't know if we actually needed that to be in the zoning, but I kind of like it there because it's something that I, I hope they develop. I hope they make this thing that's sort of like a, you know, to the extent that this can be really like a, what's the word I'm looking for? Well, anyway, easy.
Your process, yeah.
Yeah.
I have one, a quick question, Tom.
Yeah.
So on this, when we're talking, it looks, I think it's under B. Structures proposed to be on, on or at required setback lines shall require verification by a surveyor prior to issuing a building permit. So there's, there's a couple of pieces wrapped up in there that are, that I think are important to think about. So number one, are we, are we going to maintain all zoning setbacks within this? We're not going to ease them for this type of, uh, that's number one. And number two, that, so I know this because I just had a surveyor do my property. It's very expensive. So, you know, I mean, which is not a bad thing. But, you know, so, but it is an impediment to someone wanting to do this if they're going to have to shell out three grand, like right off the bat before they can know if they can do something or not. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. First of all, I'm very open to reducing setbacks, you know, where it's reasonable to do so. And second of all, I, I believe that when it's saying on or at, it's saying like, so if they, if the, if they submit the plans and the setback is, reduce the setback or whatever. The setback now is, is 10 feet, right? And they submit the plans and the plan is that it's 10 feet away, then they want someone verifying that.
Right.
If the setback, if, if the thing's 20 feet away, there's no need to bring in a surveyor because it's not at the setback.
Right.
That's my understanding. I, I wouldn't mind getting some, making sure that Jeff agrees with that.
Okay, that, I think that's going to be an important one. Yeah, go ahead, Owen, and then, and then Dan.
So just, if you wanted to build another building on your property now, like, let's not, not even talk about accessory dwellings, but, um, you know, some sort of legal, like, say you wanted to put another garage in. Do you have to, I'm assuming you have to get a survey for that?
If you want to put a, a garage in?
Yeah, like, say you want to put a detached garage in right now. You want, you wanted to pull a permit and put a detached garage in. Do you have to get a survey to put that, um, to, to put that, that building on your lot?
That's a good question. I mean, I think it would be at the discretion of the building commissioner, I believe. I don't think it's in the zoning requiring a, a, a surveyor. It might be. I, I should know that, but.
Yeah, I don't, I, I've just asked you, what, I'm basically getting at, like, is this consistent with the rest of our zoning for construction of additional, um, buildings or, or structures on a property? Or is this, is this a little, is this onerous? Kind of to your point, Mr. Chairman, but like, is, um, is, is, is a, is a, a site survey enough? Like especially if the setback's 10 feet, like, isn't that pretty easy to determine? I, I just want to make sure, I agree, like, I want to make sure that if the, if the intention is to reduce barriers, that we didn't just create one. If this is consistent with the rest of our language to basically put any, you know, new structure on your property that I think that's reasonable, I just wanted to kind of find out about that.
That, that's a good question. And I, well, I know, so what I do know is I know that a shed that's under 200 square feet does not even need a building permit.
Right.
It just has to be located in the rear section of your, of your property. And it, and it also doesn't need to follow any setbacks. But if you do, like, so if you add on to your house, then you're required, and, and some zones, it's easier. So like in, in R35, this, the rear setback's 30 feet. And in R5, it's probably a lot smaller, you know, because that's a more dense zone. But in some properties, the, it's going to be really clear, especially in like the R5, R10s, because you might have somebody's backyard budding your backyard with a fence. And so I have to just take a tape measure and be like, you know, I mean, there, there might be an inch or two of variation, but it's going to be super easy. It kind of gets a little bit trickier when you come out towards the R35s, when you might have nothing in the backyard and they, you might have old, you know, markers. So the building commissioner might ask for a survey, which is going to cost you three grand.
I mean, at minimum, I think we should say maybe something where it's like the building commissioner, like, uh, the building commissioner may require a, a survey. Because if it's just obvious to everybody involved that like, or if it's something where like, okay, yeah, you're technically, maybe you're nine feet and seven inches instead of 10 feet, but the near. but the nearest house to you is a hundred feet away, like, then just, you know, be, we just don't need to be too stringent about that.
Right.
Like, maybe something we could talk about?
I think, yeah, that's, that sounds, that sounds fair. I think we're, we're heading in the right direction if we, uh, go ahead, Dan.
You could just change the word from shall require verification to may require, and you'll fix that. One of the things that I was thinking about with this and, and with the square footage requirement is existing structures that are on a property that might be converted to dwellings, like I have a detached garage. It's big enough that I can turn it into an apartment or a barn, because a lot of the land, especially in, in my district, are, used to be farms, and they might have a barn detached, and that's a lot bigger. That, that, that goes to the square footage requirement, but also is it too close to the line? And would it be quote-unquote grandfathered in? So I think somewhere in here for both the square footage requirements that, and I, and I know, Tom, you probably have some amendments to that, but we might wanna consider existing structures that exist prior to the establishment of this can be made into uh, accessory dwellings, and I'd rather it not be by special permit. I, if they exist, um, it's a barn and it's, it's even bigger than the home, why can't it be? And, and that came into with John Lozoto, and then, and I figure there's a lot of detached buildings like that in the city. Might be able to be used, and the square footage requirement and this, this requirement about setbacks might be an impediment to them. You're gonna get into the square footage requirement in a minute, so. You might need to look at existing structures on the property being converted.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, and I, I think that the one caveat that we probably wanna think about for that is, you know, if it's, if it's a major alteration, like, you know, so say you have a structure in your backyard that, you know, is, just needs to be torn down, but you're like, oh, well, I'm gonna tear it down and turn it into this, like, really palatial, you know, backyard residence. I mean, there, we might wanna have a little bit more process there, but I, I mean, I agree with you. I think like an existing structure, you know, by right, it should be able to be converted if, if, if they're just gonna be converting it into.
Conversion, not new structure. You tear it down, that's a new structure.
Yeah, or like, you know, tear ninety percent of it down, so you leave a one, like.
Uh, building commissioner has write the language right there.
Yeah, uh, go ahead, Owen.
I think, but I'm not sure. I think this is kind of, what you were just discussing is kind of along the lines of what we dealt with, with the zero lot lines, is that, that, that's the reason why a lot of the, 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 the foundations or the buildings at one ferry are, are, they're not technically, uh, they're not technically building new buildings, they're actually renovating old ones. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that was, that's what, that's the way it's, it works so that it fits into the zoning. I, I'm not, can I remember that correctly, Tom?
I can't remember, like, so, what you're saying is because they're building on the foundation that was already there, then it's not, doesn't, it's not considered new. Or, 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 but I think it might be that and that they're, you know, building off of a certain percentage of the existing structure, like.
Correct, yes. Yeah, so I mean, within that discussion, I mean, you know, if you have an old barn, you might have to do some major structural renovation, but not, but the one, not one that involves basically completely removing the structure, rebuilding. So, I mean, the planner might have some clarification there. Dan, I mean, if you have, you know, old, old buildings that could be converted, like, they, they should be, I mean.
Yeah, we want that.
We do want that, yeah.
Okay, so I think those are all really good points, um, and I, I just made it, can you guys see? I, I just
Perfect.
Alright, you, you ready to move on?
Let's go.
So, the principal use of the lot shall be a detached, uh, single or two-family dwelling. Yeah, I think that's fine. The owners of the detached, single or two-family dwelling can, uh, shall occupy one of the units as their primary resident, except for bona fide temporary absences. To be honest, I'm not a hundred percent sure this needs to be in there, because like, if, if you were like, I mean, I don't know, I guess it depends on the circumstances, but I'm not, I'm not actually certain that it's a problem if you have if you're renting out like a single-family house, and then you put another unit on there, I don't, I don't see how that's materially different from just having a two-family unit and renting out both units. So, I'm, I'm just not sure. What do you guys think? Is that, is this some, like, because beyond that, like, so what if I build, like, this is, I guess, the bigger concern. Like, say that I build a um, an ADU uh, for a family member uh, to stay in, and then a few years later, I have a career and it forces me to move, right? Is that ADU? Can that no longer be an ADU? Like, is, can, is there, if there's somebody staying in that, do they have to like leave? Because like, this, these are the sorts of questions. I just get a little concerned about this sort of stuff, where I don't even know how you enforce that, like, bona fide temporary absences. So, yeah, I'd like to know what you guys think about that.
I just wanna say that this might have been put in so that some developer can build a bunch of these kinds of accessory dwellings attached to buildings there on end, they're renting it, both of them, and we have these all over. I, I, I tend to agree with you, Tom, but I think the reason for this, for absentee landlords to start taking over properties like this. On the other hand, what's wrong with that if they're renting market rate rental? I don't know. But that might be why it's there. You'd have to ask Jeff why it's there.
Go ahead, Owen.
Yeah, I mean, Dan raised a good point. Like, I was trying to think, as you were speaking, uh, Counselor Peak, like, what's the downside? But, I mean, we're creating more housing units, so unless there, unless we could foresee some sort of advantageous or, or um, uh, a predatory kind of behavior, like, I don't, I don't care who's in those units, but I think, I think uh, Counselor Risk raised is a good point. We just, we do have to look at all sides of it, but frankly, I don't, I don't care who's occupying these units as of right now, but I'd wanna make sure that we're not setting up an opportunity for someone to take advantage of people. But if overall, we're, we're fairly creating more units for people to reside in and they're affordable, then hmm, I don't, I don't know if that requirement's necessary.
I, I mean, I agree, and I think, you know, one of the, the things to think about is, you know, let's say a landlord owns a bunch of multifamily properties on a certain street, and they're like, oh, this is a great opportunity. I'm gonna put an accessory, uh, an accessory building in every backyard, and I'm gonna have, and you know, and they might do it on the cheap. It might not fit the character of the neighborhood. It just might be them trying to be greedy. I, I mean, I think that that could potentially be that. But, I mean, again, it's creating more housing, which is what we're looking for. It just might cause um, you know, a, a uproar with neighbors or, or within a community. But I don't know if the making the owner live at the thing, at the residence is the answer to that. I think there's probably other ways we could go about that. So, alright, cool. I, I think that's a good, a good question that we should ask, so.
Next one is, there shall, there shall not be more than one accessory apartment on a lot. I think this feeds into the same thing. I could see circumstances where it maybe wouldn't be the worst thing in the world for someone to have two. I think, um, you know, if you're particularly if we're talking about like a barn conversion, you could probably easily have a barn that you could put two in, or like, just thinking about my house, I've thought about doing this cuz I have parents who, um, you know, are probably not gonna live independently for, or, you know, they both live in their own places, but that might not be the case forever. So I had thought about either putting something in my backyard or building like a garage onto the side of my house and having an ADU like on a second floor. And like, if I had both of those, I just don't think it would be the end of the world. I, like, but I do get that you don't want, like, you don't want a situation where there's like a ton of these. So, I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but I, I just kinda do wonder, like, would it be the end of the world if we allowed two?
Go ahead, Owen.
So, yeah, so here's the scenario. You have a, I don't know, four thousand square foot barn on your property that you wanna convert to a living space, like, can that be converted into like four thousand square foot apartments? That's an interesting question. Like, is it one apartment or one building?
I think that's the, that's the question that we.
It says one apartment.
Right, no, I know, I know that. I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, like, you know, a barn could be a pretty gigantic living space, and sure, that, I mean, if, if we wanna stick to, you know, uh, uh, one u- basically one u- one unit per building, uh, and you're only allowed one, but I'm just, I'm, I'm like, now I'm like, going down this other path of other other ways to build in language to make it that it's one building, when you could have multiple units, and I don't, I don't know the answer there.
Looks like Dan.
I, I would just like to say that if it's an existing barn, like you just said, doesn't it defeat the purpose to limit it to one unit, one apartment? If they could, in an existing building. Now, I don't wanna see someone with a twelve hundred square foot ranch build a multifamily or multi-apartment dwelling, cuz they have enough land. But if they have a barn, it's already built as existing structure, and they could turn it into with a few walls, four apartments, that helps the housing crunch. So, I think if you look at existing structures and be careful not to let them build huge buildings as accessory dwellings, you're okay. It's, it's where you get new construction, where you're starting to do multifamily accessory dwellings. You see what I'm saying? Does that make sense? I would be concerned about that. But a barn that could be converted, as you said, four thousand square foot, why not? What's the downside? I guess somebody who's in planning, like Jeff, can tell us what the downside is of that.
I just remember having a, a constituent who talked about having a big property and thinking like, I think they had two kids and, and, and they thought like, I'd love for the kids to be able to live on this land. It's a big property. I could easily put like two cottages on there. And Salem, are you cool with me just admitting people when they, when that pop up?
Yeah, uh, whoever does it first, I'll admit them, or you can, it doesn't matter.
But like, uh, you know, I, I, so I just kinda wondered, like, if that's something, I, I, I don't have a really strong feeling about this, but I just thought it was something we could potentially explore, is like, maybe, maybe in certain cases, or maybe it's I mean, I don't know, may, maybe there's, so, I don't know, I just wanna know what Jeff's take on it is, really.
I, I think it's a good one to put a note on. I think it's one that we should come back to, cuz I mean, yeah, I don't think anybody wants to see their neighbors have like multiple dwellings in their backyard that doesn't support it, but you know, if, if it supports it and it's an existing thing, I think that's worth looking at, so.
So D, I don't really have anything to say about, but yeah, the accessory dwelling shall not be sold or transferred separate and apart from the principal dwelling, uh, to which it is an accessory. Uh, the principal dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit shall remain in common and single ownership. That seems reasonable to me. I mean, I think that if somebody really want, certain people depending, probably could divide their property um, and just sort of rezone that as a primary residence, but um, potentially, uh, but yeah, if they're planning to keep it as an accessory dwelling, then it should be there. So I, I don't, does anyone have any thoughts about that one? So here's one, um, where I think, uh, I, I, I kinda wanna look at this, and, and I, I have sort of actually strong feelings about this one, is E, which currently says, there shall be one off-street parking space for the accessory dwel- uh, apartment in addition to off-street required uh, for the principal dwelling. The parking space shall be constructed of materials consistent with the existing driveway and shall have vehicular access to the driveway. No off-street parking uh, for the principal dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit shall be permitted in front of the principal dwelling between the front building line and the front lot line. So. I, I, maybe I'm, I, I don't, maybe I'm, I'm reading this wrong, but like, uh, here's like a situation that I'm, I'm thinking of, is like, you know, uh, these, these things are, are frequently referred to as like in-law apartments, because that's one of the traditional uses of them, is uh, people who have sort of older family members who they want to, you know, have living close to them, but not necessarily, but maybe they, for one reason or another, they, you know, they want their own space. There are many people um, who don't drive, and particularly if you're looking at um, older people, there's many older people who can't drive, right? And so, um, say that it's me and like, say, say that I'm, I'm living, I mean, Kelsey doesn't have a car, so really like my household right now is, you know, one car that's really needed. Say that I had a, an ADU come in, like, maybe I only need one parking space in that driveway, or, and, and beyond that, I mean, most driveways can accommodate two cars. If it's me living alone in my single-family house, and then I rent the ADU out to someone, even if they have a car, I don't understand why there's a need. Like, I, I think there's, I think there could be a lot of situations where you could have one of these and have an additional person living on that parcel, and that they don't need an extra unit, and certainly not, and like, expanding your driveway. That seems like the sort of expensive thing that is, that kills things like this.
Well, instead of shall, we could just say may.
Well, I mean, do we even need to put, because of course you may expand your driveway.
But this, I mean, this requires, uh, I mean, like, I don't necessarily see a reason to require a parking space for it. The thing that is confusing to me is the no off-street parking for the principal dwelling. Because I feel like.
What do you know?
What's that?
How would you even enforce that? How do you know, like, because, it, you're like, yeah, we have some times where you just can't park off-street in certain, you know, there's some places you can't ever park off-street, and pu- pull my car up to Holyoke Street and just in the road, but like, you know, on the side streets around me, during the summer, lots of people park their cars on the street. Even if they have, sometimes they have, they just pull their cars up next to their houses. Not, uh, like, there's nothing wrong with that, and so how, how would you even go about enforcing that?
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
And not regarding enforcing, I, I don't know how you need this, but this may go to access. I would only be concerned that there's access to the accessory dwelling unit, if it's like behind the house.
Sure.
Is it sufficient, and I don't know the answer, is it sufficient to have the principal dwelling's driveway, say, be the access for the ambulance? Or is there a need for a driveway to get to that other accessory dwelling? I have a pretty big lot. I was thinking maybe I would put a driveway next to my house. I could put a driveway all the way down to the lot. And my only concern for this is the need for emergency access. But I don't know the answer to that, and I agree with Tom, we may not need this, it's just more parking spaces. It's another thing that prevents i- i- it's a barrier to having these dwellings bu- built. But emergency access, that's something you have to think about. I don't know what that is.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Owen.
Yeah, I'm in, kind of in the same mind of Dan, that, that there's an access issue, and, and while people might not have a car, they also might have a car and in the future. And, you know, driveways also sometimes are, are for uses other than vehi- I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing both sides. I'm seeing Counselor Peak's argument, and I'm also seeing that, um, for a given unit, having a driveway might serve some sort of, you know, necessary role. I don't know.
That's large enough to take two cars, and there's, you know, one of those cars is for the accessory dwelling. I'm not sure, is this written, Tom, for a brand-new parking space to be built in addition to what's existing on the property? Cuz if there's enough room for an extra car in the existing driveway, does that satisfy this? If not.
Well, right, so I need to actually check and make sure that I understand our, our parking requirements around zoning to begin with. But, again, like, sort of, if you have a, a driveway that can fit two cars, and you're living there by yourself, and you move in an elderly relative And you move in an elderly relative who cannot drive. Then a two-car driveway, even if the zoning would says that that's, that needs to now be a three-car driveway. You're just forcing someone to pave part of their lawn, um, and then never use it.
I agree.
Owen.
Yeah, uh, that's a great question and I think that you hit the nail on the head. The language, my thought would be the language should be something like. There shall be enough parking spaces to accommodate one car per unit. So. If you have a two-car driveway, great, you're golden. You have one for the house and one for the, the unit. And if you only have a driveway that fits one car, maybe you have to put another space in. I don't know, is that like a reasonable compromise?
I, I think it would be. It would kind of depend on like, uh, and I'd have to refresh my, myself with. What is a single family's requirement for off-street parking? So if it's two. And then you build an accessory unit, um, then you would have to put in a, a new driveway. In order to accommodate one per unit, you know what I'm, you know what I mean? So if it was, if it's two for a house. Then you add another one, um, but I, I think that's, that's something we can ask Jeff and, and I think that's, you know, uh. This is a, this is one of those ones we should definitely come back to.
We have a lot of zones in our city, even the R forty that I'm in, we have, uh. Ranch homes that don't even have driveways or very little in the street, have to park in the street, so. I don't know how you deal with this.
All right, well.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can break this one. I think it's worth.
Uh, yeah, and I, I'm not claiming that I have the answers to all of this, but I, I think that. I'm just looking at this and saying, like, so when we pass this and someone goes, oh, great, I'm gonna go get an ADU. Like, what's gonna be the thing that kills that project? This is one, um, I see where it says. Where a new, so this is, this is sort of along the same lines. I don't know if we need to dwell on this for too long. But it, you know, where a newer expanded driveway on the lot is proposed to be. Uh, within ten feet of the side or rear lot line, there shall be a landscaped buffer. Of at least six feet measuring from the lot line, uh, with. In which no parking, outdoor storage or other use shall be permitted. Unless the abs- applicant and abutter enter into a written agreement to allow to the reduced setback. Uh, or no landscape buffer, um, upon application. Uh, landscaping and screening where required, uh, shall be installed prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. So I get that, that's very. If, if you're expanding your driveway in a way that it's gonna be. You know, coming closer to your neighbor's property, then maybe you need to put up some hedges.
And that's consistent with current zoning as well.
And it's all about a butters, a butters making them happy or you'll have lots of problems.
Yeah, now here's one that's gonna kill our barn.
Oh, right.
This has to be changed.
So that, yeah, I want to talk about this because there's a couple of problems I have with this. Um, this is actually probably the one I like the least. Um, and I, and I don't like the parking one, but I like this one even less. Um, so. An accessory dwelling shall not exceed nine hundred square feet or fifty percent. Of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is greater, up to a maximum of eleven hundred square. As provided, uh, by section, uh, eight point five seven. So, okay, first of all, I just don't understand. I feel like we're just overcomplicating it. Like, I don't understand why. Somebody who lives in a very large house should be able to build a larger accessory dwelling than someone who lives in a smaller house.
That makes no sense.
Classist and it just seems like a lot of work. Just say, if we're saying that an eleven hundred square foot ADU is an acceptable thing. Let's just make it eleven hundred for everyone. That's the other thing is there's only two hundred square feet of difference that we're actually talking about here. Take a lot of work for two hundred square feet.
I'll think about with eleven hundred, Tom.
I have no idea, um.
He- here's my, well, we have to have that exception for. Existing structures like a barn that might be converting because they could be twice the size of the little ranch. I know John Lozoto's on here and then he has the same issue and I have an issue with this. But on the other hand, do you want this two thousand square foot? Principal dwelling to also have a two thousand square foot accessory dwelling? So maybe there needs to be limits, but what is that limit? I just don't think the fifty percent thing should be in there. I think you should have.
Yeah.
Decide what a square foot limit is and do it, but you also have to write exceptions for existing structures. Or they can't be used with this language here.
Yeah.
Last thing I wanted to bring up, but it, it's concerning me and this is where you definitely have to get Jeff in here. In my district, we have an aquifer, uh, overlay zone. Reason, way back when I started, one of the first things we did was change the zoning. Cause Mike Tocic, the mayor, was a big time aquifer protection guy and we had, I think we had R fifteen. Out here in the plains area and now it's R forty and that was to protect the aquifer. And there was a lot of debate on how much of a, the land could be covered to protect the aquifer, like a long driveway or other big buildings. And that was with a single lot. So I have a concern for that and I, I have to make sure that. This isn't up against the aquifer protection zoning intent of my district. And I just wanted to bring it up as something that we need to make sure of with regard to that, because I'm all for protecting the aquifer. But I'm also all for allowing accessory dwellings. If there's existing structures, they're already there and they were grandfathered in when we did the new zoning too, so. I don't remember what those restrictions are, but I want you guys to be aware that that's something that's on my mind. Um, and I, I don't think we should allow huge buildings as accessory dwellings, but I don't think we should do this fifty percent. Nine hundred square feet or fifty percent. I, I think that as Tom said, it's not fair.
That's a good point. I, I didn't even think about aquifer protection and that, that is, I mean, really.
Only in my area.
Yeah, I mean, but I mean, it's an aquifer recharge zone and that's really important, um, and you know, our water is one of our best resources, so we gotta make sure that we're. Being aware of that, so, oh, and.
I don't want to deny accessory dwellings. I mean, if it's, if they're small enough, they're not really impacting the aquifer, I don't think, but.
No, go ahead, Owen.
Yeah, we have to be thoughtful about the aquifer. I don't know if there should be exempt, some sort of restrictions there, exemptions, but, uh. Yeah, I mean, even eleven hundred seems small. I mean, I don't really get the. If you have the space, like, I mean, maybe there should be a maximum, but I think that eleven hundred square feet seems silly.
Like, I mean, for what it's worth, my three-bedroom ranch is twelve hundred.
Right, but I mean.
Do a lot at eleven hundred. I mean, but if you wanted to change it to a different number, I, I truly don't actually care about the number. But what I do think is that it should be a consistent number. And I also think that if you are renovating an existing structure, which is bigger than that, like. You shouldn't be forced to like not convert part of that structure. So as to not, like, it, that just seems just very silly and onerous to me.
Yeah.
I, I just think you eliminate the fif- nine hundred and fifty percent thing. And determine what that maximum will be. Is it the same size as the existing dwelling? If you have a two thousand square foot existing dwelling and you have enough land, you can't build it bigger than two thousand square feet.
Right.
Because you, if you have a existing barn, it might be two thousand square feet or four thousand to use Owen's idea. You can convert that into four apartments. Why can't you build one? A brand-new one, but again, there's gotta be a limit of something. But fifty percent is, is difficult. Cause in the twelve hundred square foot thing, then you have a six hundred square foot building. That's pretty small, isn't it? I know people.
Whichever.
Four fifty, nine hundred versus fifty percent.
Yeah.
Nine hundred would prevail.
Yeah, and, and so I.
Don't like either.
Right.
I, I think we're at a good, this is, this, I thi- I feel like it would be, give us some perspective to talk to Jeff on this one as well.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, you guys, we need Jeff.
Yeah, so what I'll do is I'm just gonna send this with all of these things to Jeff to be like. Could you just be aware that these are the comments that we made and be prepared? Like, I'll try and get on the phone with him before our next meeting, but, um, just to sort of, I'm just gonna send him this as. Written so that we can sort of, uh, he can get a sense of what we discussed tonight. Do we, you, we want move, move on?
Yeah, let's, let's move on.
Feel like we've spoken the, the. Okay, so there should be no occupancy until the. Certificancy of occupancy and the principal dwelling and accessory unit comply with all building codes and city ordinances. But, but I, I mean, I don't know, that's like, yeah, we shouldn't. You can't occupy it until there's a certificate of occupancy. It obviously seems redundant, but I'm fine with that being in there.
Yep.
Okay, uh, the accessory dwelling unit may be located inside or attached to an existing. New family, uh, or, or new, single-family dwelling. So that's an interior or attached unit. Or in a detached, existing or new accessory structure, a detached unit. Uh, detached units, uh, may be in existing floor space. I don't exactly know what that means.
Such as above.
Such as about, yeah, no, they're, they're mentioned. So it's just above a garage, uh, or in a. Freestanding detached structure such as a cottage separate from the principal dwelling. That makes sense to me, basically says. However, you want to do this.
Yep.
There's a lot of different ways to do it. Uh, I see Owen has.
Yeah, go ahead, Owen.
Yeah, I mean, this goes back to the barn discussion then. I mean, it, it implicit here is that, like, if you had a detached barn. That, uh, ultimately it'd be limited to X amount of living space. So it's just, that's just something to, that's what they talked to Jeff about, like how that would shake out.
Yeah. Um, so then when the requirements of this section eight point five. Uh, conflict with requirements of other sections of the zoning, uh, the requirements of this section shall prevail. So, okay, that's cool.
I, I like this because it makes this the primary zoning. In other words, except I want you to look at what the aquifer protection zoning requirements are. Because this would override them, would it?
Yeah.
Am I reading that right? Because. Um, that's the only thing I want you to look at, but otherwise it makes this a priority. And I guess I kind of like that, but again.
Yeah.
Uh, because that means what this does, it deregulates the fact that, oh, we have to look at this zoning ordinance because. Um, it conflicts with that. So that there's all these special permits required because then you have to do one versus the other.
Yep.
And I like that, but I do bring up the aquifer again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that the aquifer is an impo- I mean, obviously it's, it's important that that be able to recharge so that we continue to have delicious drinking water. All that, but I, I think, these, I mean, maybe we even put an exception for that to be like, if you're in the, but, but that in general, like. If, but what I like about this is that this, this zoning is four pages, right? And so, again. The people, I actually, I don't know if I've said this yet, I think this is important though. Um, what I, I really love this sort of micro-development from like an economic perspective. Uh, because there's like sort of the, this is the political and the power dynamics in it are really interesting. You know, where you have just a person who's just gonna add a housing unit. Probably a housing unit that they're gonna rent to someone at a fair, you know, affordable price. As opposed to a lot of what adding housing units is in. You know, development and, and cities these days, which is going to some loaded, out-of-town developer and. Giving them all these incentives to add a whole bunch of housing units all in one place. I like the way that in this sort of thing, you can do this. And where I'm going with this is, these are, the people who are gonna be developing these are not gonna be sophisticated developers with their own consultants and lawyers. They're gonna be someone who says, yeah, I've got a pretty big backyard or I could put a, a second story on my garage and. Put a little apartment in there, right? And, and you, you don't want them getting burdened out. So having. What I like about this section is that you can basically say, it's four pages long. Nothing in it is incredibly technical and if you fit these, there's nothing else in our three hundred and fifty-page zoning, which is going. To trip you up, like if you, you just fit with these and, and you're gonna be good. Um, okay, so.
I, I have to run and I just wanted to say, I think this is great that you guys are working this out and I'll come back whenever you get to it again. Um, the one thing I want to make sure, going with Tom says, is. Giving the building commissioner discretion to allow accessory dwelling is great. But don't give him too much discretion to deny. So think about that statement because I think. Even though it's only four pages, if you limit too much specificity in here, Tom. You're giving the building commissioner, are you giving the building commissioner leeway to say no to something? If it's not written down.
Right.
But this I language is great because it prevents him from using a different zoning ordinance to prevent something.
Yeah.
Yeah. Participating with this, Dan.
Your feedback. Coming, Dan.
All right, thank you, guys.
Uh, so one of the things that, um. So I see that these are standards for interior and we didn't really talk about design standards for exterior. Is there a place that covers that?
Yep, uh, it's the next thing.
Oh, there we go, sorry.
Rear and then eight point five five is for detached units.
Great, perfect.
Um, okay, so for an interior. Or attached accessory apartment shall be designed, uh, to maintain an appearance of a single or two-family dwelling. Um, subject to the following requirements, uh, there shall be a separate entrance. Either directly from the outside or through an entry hall or corridor shared with the principal dwelling. So that's. Just sort of the same thing you'd see with a, a, excuse me, uh, with a two-family. Um, sufficient to meet the requirements of state building code for safe egress, obviously. You want safe egress. I think where this is really important is someone saying like, if you want to put something like this in a basement, like do a basement apartment. That you're gonna need a safe egress. Um, so all stairways to an accessory apartment above the first floor shall be enclosed. Within exterior walls of the single-family dwelling. Or on the side or rear of the dwelling if constructed on the outer wall. Egress stairs shall not be permitted on the s- front, street-facing facade. I guess that's fine. I don't, I mean, that's not something we frequently see is stairs on the fronts of buildings, so I guess we can. Keep with that. Um, in addition to the existing, uh. Principal dwell, uh, principal dwelling unit is permitted, provided that it complies with the maximum building height. Minimum setbacks and maximum building coverages under. Tables six point one and six, or six one and six two of the principal structure. Uh, for the principal structure of that zone. So. I think that's saying you can build an addition onto your house and make it an ADU, provided that it's acceptable with the rest of the zoning. Does that?
Yep.
Work for you guys?
Yep.
All right, eight five five, this is for, uh, detached units. Uh, an accessory apartment in a new or existing detached accessory structure is permitted, subject, yeah, okay. Uh, an existing, uh, accessory structure may be converted or renovated regardless. Of whether it, oh, so, okay, this is good. An existing, uh. Accessory structure may be converted or renovated regardless of whether it conforms to the district's minimum setbacks. As long as no changes, uh, to the footprint or height are required. Um, but it, it, so that, that fixes the setback requirement. I still have a problem with that when it comes to the. Size requirement, but I think it, it could be fine for us to just pu- even just put a section in here saying. The, or however Jeff wants to do it, I guess, but, um, yeah, so. I, I see your head.
Go ahead, Owen.
Just having a light bulb. So if we establish kind of a maximum living area that these units, that these, um, units can be. That maybe potentially addresses the, the gigantic, the, the, the kind of like. I mean, how many places in city are gonna have, like, I mean, I keep coming up with this four thousand square foot barn. I don't know how many four thousand square foot bards are in the city, but like. Let's just say right now that the maximum the unit could be eleven hundred square feet, right? But you have a twenty-five hundred square foot barn. Well, can you convert that into two eleven hundred square foot? Units, but the building, you can only, you're only allowed one building, like, does that sound fair?
Uh, uh, that makes total sense to me, you know, as far as looking at. And, and I think that there was something earlier in it that said that we could only be one other, uh, unit, so maybe that's. If, in, in those types of situations, we could adjust that, you know, if it's an eleven hundred square foot unit. But your property supports or whatever the existing structure supports more than one of those, then, then you can do more than one. It seems to make sense to me.
Yep.
That's, yeah, I mean.
A workaround.
Right, yeah, I, I, again, I, I think one, one question I'll wanna bring up with. Right, yeah, I, I, again, I, I think one, one question I'll wanna bring up with Jeff is like, right, so like, I, I, I think I definitely agree that if you have a twenty five hundred square foot barn, you should be able to put in a twenty five hundred square foot ADU, so that's what you're doing. Then the separate question is, well, what if you wanted to put in two eleven, because, because it's an existing structure, and just for that, I just don't think, I don't think the size requirements should apply to existing structures, period. That's just my thought. But then my, my, there's a second question, which is, well, what if you have a, a twenty two hundred square foot barn, and you want to turn it into two eleven hundred square foot ADUs instead of one twenty two hundred square foot ADU? Should that be allowed? I personally don't see the issue. We have a severe housing shortage. We're gonna have to do, they're like, it's possible that sometimes we're going to have to allow some things that are not, you know, like, that, that are a little bit creative. I don't personally see the issue. But I do want to talk to Jeff about it, because he might have a perspective that I don't.
Yeah, I think it's worth coming back to.
So then it's saying, yeah, um, a new or expanded ADU shall comply with the setbacks. So, okay, yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, I, I agree with that. Okay, so then we're, we're coming to, close to the end of this, guys. This is where it gets a little complicated. Um, so accessory dwelling units in non-conforming, single and two family dwellings. So alterations, extension, or structural changes to a lawfully pre-existing single family or two family residential structure shall be permitted in order to construct an accessory dwelling if the alteration extends and or structural change does not increase the non-conforming nature of the existing structure. I certainly need to figure out what, what would be a situation where it does, but um, an alter.
I, I, I would probably say that if it was um, on a non-conforming lot, and so the setbacks were out of you know, say the side of the building was too close to this, the minimum side setback.
Okay, but then you're building it behind the building where the setback is fine.
Right.
Okay. An alteration, extension, or structural change that conforms to the maximum building height, minimum yard setbacks, and maximum coverage requirements for the district as shown in tables, blah, 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 uh, shall not be deemed to increase the non-conforming nature of the existing structure. I should have just finished that paragraph before I asked that question. Some of this language is a little, is a little bit new to me because uh, the, the Barrett Group had some comments at the last minute, so bear with me. The zoning board of appeals may grant a special permit to construct an accessory dwelling if the alterations, extension, or structural change of a single family or two family property increases the non-conforming nature of the structure, provided that the board finds that the proposed changes do not uh, shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use of the structure. That makes sense to me. So, if, if, if like, it's technically non-conforming, but this really isn't like, it technically makes it worse, but in reality, it kind of, yeah, I bring up the example of like, okay, so you've got a setback that isn't quite right, but the next house is a hundred feet away. Oh, maybe, who's really being affected by this?
So, and then, plus they would have to get a variance, so they would have to show. Um, it would be difficult, I imagine.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think that going through the ZBA is always a challenge, but um, but yeah, okay, so that's, uh, okay. Special permit for an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, the following waivers to the above sections may be approved by a special permit of the zoning board of appeals, provided the board finds that the proposed accessory dwelling unit will be substantially consistent with the purposes of this section eight point five, and will not have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. So then the, the variances that they're gonna allow are an accessory dwelling unit which exceeds the maximum floor area, a reduction of the minimum required parking, uh, where the board finds that such waiver will not result in or working, worsen parking problems in the proximity of the part, uh, property. A reduction in a required setback if either a similar pattern of setbacks occurs at abutting properties. Or the reduction would not have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. And any other requirement under section eight point five, if it is found that the waiver will allow uh, for the creation of an accessory dwelling unit in the existing structure, or legalization of an existing unit. Um, and that waiver will not have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. So it's basically saying that if any of this doesn't fit, but that in reality, it's not a big deal here, you can go to the ZBA, and if you can demonstrate that it's not a big deal, you can still get your ADU, but it does mean going through the ZBA, which means paying money and informing all of your butters and, um, you know, doing a public hearing, which can often get contentious, so the goal is to avoid that where possible. Um, any questions about this section?
Nope.
All right. Provision for accessory dwelling units under prior special permits. An accessory apartment that exists under and conforms to the conditions of a special per- permit granted by the board of appeals prior to whenever we hopefully pass this, uh, shall be deemed a permitted accessory dwelling unit under this section, so that makes sense. Any previously authorized accessory apartment, special permits, shall now be deemed to uh, run with the land and shall no longer expire uh, upon sale the property or transfer of the title. That's really good, because currently, if you have an accessory dwelling and you sell it, you need to go, the next owner needs to go back to the ZBA and ask them to use it as an accessory dwelling, which I have to imagine is just not great for your property value, that you're like, oh yeah, you got this beautiful apartment you could rent out, uh, but you gotta go through an extensive public hearing process immediately upon moving into the neighborhood. Yeah, people are gonna love that. Um, and uh, that's it.
Great. I think, I think this is a really good start, and I, I think we have a good uh, range of questions for Jeff. Um, so, yeah, I, I think we're in a good, a good spot here.
Okay, cool. Um, well then, yeah, I can take uh, this what I have right here, my notes, and send that on to Jeff and see if I can't set up a phone call before, when's our next meeting?
Um, well, I know that we have a joint meeting in April. I'm trying to remember.
Oh, the.
April thirteenth, perhaps?
Yeah, I believe that's right.
Yeah, uh, yeah, but we, I, I'm sure we have one in March, I just don't remember if we said it yet.
Yeah, I don't know if we have.
Hey, um, Chairman Derby.
Yeah.
Do you think, well, actually, we could probably just do it before then, nevermind. I was gonna ask if we could just tack on delivery to that April meeting, but we could probably maybe try to get that in March sometime, right?
We, we, I'm, I'm thinking we might be, it depends on what the planning board has going on, but I'll, I'll, I'll send an email to Jeff um, tonight. Well, we could do the, uh, like Tuesday the ninth of March.
Yeah, sure, let's do that.
You guys want to do that? March?
You think, you think, is the plan to go, to go over Council Peak's other recommendation at that time, or?
I think, I think we can maybe see where we're at with this one and start looking at the other one as well.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, you said the ninth?
The ninth at six P M? Does that work for you, Owen?
Yes, let me just double check, I'm in the wrong month, so, yeah, I don't have a conflict that I can see, so, yep.
It's amazing, perfect. Um, and so I'll put that in, and I would say, you know, as we think about the other one, you, you know, I, I think, I, you know, I did look it over, and I mean, it's similar to a, a one that we had brought in the past. The, the only, so, and this is just like food for thought for next, for when we do start talking about it. Is I, I think that one of the most important things that we do with that is to, you know, uh, figure out a way to balance open space with that, because this could, you know, usher in into a lot of places that we consider to like, you know, a lot of places in the city that are open right now, we assume are protected, and they're not. Um, and so it's just, you know, so, open space is super important. Affordable housing is super important, so I think we need to like, come with the lens of, of looking to enhance and protect both of those things. So I just wanted to throw that out there as we go through it, but.
Yeah, and, and you know I'm very commoted to open space.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I, 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 the one point I would make is that like, currently, you know, if, if there's gonna be open space that's gonna go away, I would much rather see it go away to some multifamily that has some affordable housing than to like a subdivision, uh, like huge, single family sort of
Mansions.
Style things, which is currently remarkably easy to do, unlike multifamily.
That's true. Yep, so, yeah, good point, yeah. Go ahead, Owen.
Yeah, I mean, something to talk about is ways of preserving. I agree with the, I mean, maybe there's some thoughtful ways to include, include something, even if it's like a pocket like green space, or, but, I mean, not, not at the cost of expanding our, our housing stock, but I think like, there's, there's ways to balance, I think, use of land, and so, especially, you know, when you start talking about multifamily units, and you have like, let's say you have a unit of like ten people, like, they'll probably want some sort of access to shared common space, so, you know, just putting, putting that out there and trying to figure out a balance.
And I know, I, that, I mean, the reason I said that is because that's every time that we, we've brought this up, that's been one of the main, you know, things that's kind of come into the equation. But, that's good, we'll save that for another time. And uh, yeah, I, I think that we're probably, we're probably good to adjourn.
Well, I'll make a motion to adjourn then.
Okay.
Seconds.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second. Tom Peak.
Hi.
Owen's there.
Yes.
And I vote yes too. We are adjourned, so we'll see you guys uh, in March ninth, six P M.
And I'll see y'all next week.
Oh yeah, next week too.
See you then.
Thanks, everybody. Take care.
Chairman Dur, don't forget to send me that, send, be, send me that, um, that quick thing about purchasing land or whatever, I, I hadn't heard about that, for the native, the indigenous people's sake.
Oh yeah, yeah, I will do that. I will do that. Yeah, I'll do that as soon as we get off.
Okay, thank you so much.
Take care, everybody.
Y'all.